I'd like to call the Thursday, September the 7th, 2017, special meeting of the school board to order. If you will stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Lamb and the mission statement. Amen. Mr. Lamb?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Mr. Lamb, would you read our mission statement, sir?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Okay. Before I ask the clerk to call attendance, I'd like to welcome our new student representative, Mr. Ian Robertson. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen, present. Zackerson. Reverend Fleming.
Present.
Mrs. Hines. Present. Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Reverend Patillo.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the agenda for September the 7th. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made. And second, do I have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
All right, at this time, we will go into closed session. I'm going to ask Mrs. Williams to read the motion, please.
I move that the board enter to a closed meeting on the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. One, consideration of a request for religious exemption from school attendance as permitted under subsection 8.2. And two, consideration of a student readmission as permitted under subsection 8.2.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Move for approval. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Zackerson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Before we go into closed session, now that we all of us are here, I'm going to ask if we can all go out in the grand area so that we can have our picture made with the fence line. And then we'll go back. Then we'll be in closed session.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
We want to assume she's here.
The next item on the agenda is 3.2, and that is consideration of a religious exemption, case number 2017-18/03. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion's been made. And second, considering discussion. Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Zackerson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is 3.3, consideration of a readmission, case number 2017-18/03, reference discipline case number 2015-16/09.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
No.
Ms. Zackerson.
No.
Reverend Fleming.
No.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Ms. Hello.
No.
Dr. Whitaker.
Hello.
Mrs. Williams.
No.
Mr. Perrin.
No.
It's unanimous.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of the 2018 school board meetings. You have a copy of the 2018 school board meetings. You noticed in March, we're going to be at Parkview, and in August of next year, we're going to be at TCC Portsmouth campus. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Sir?
Second.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. The other one, I didn't print it out in color, I didn't see that. Yeah, and in November, we're going to be at Wilson High School. Okay. I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion from the board?
When is graduation week?
When is graduation week?
Yeah, we're going to discuss that in a few minutes. Don't talk about the dates. It's a date, just one date.
Right, one.
Yeah.
When we get to that. Okay.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I just want to make sure that it does not conflict with special meeting in June. It won't?
No.
Okay.
I remember at one point, we were asking whether or not there were going to be any joint meetings.
We're waiting on that. We're waiting for them to give us those dates.
Yes.
I just want to say, I'm excited to move the summer retreat to TCC. I know that that will help build our partnership with them and allow us a chance, hopefully, to tour the building and see where some of our students work and what our students get to go see every day. So I just wanted to thank staff and thank the board chair for making that move.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Zackerson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is for discussion, 2018 graduation relocation. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Perrin. As you all know, we've been inquiring, listening, gathering information regarding relocating our graduation through surveys. Some of you have even submitted some individual surveys and what the division has done. So Dr. Cromartie has been compiling some of that information and has been looking at some alternative sites for it. So at this time, I'll ask him to give us an update on where we are with that process.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Alternatively to the Pavilion, we were considering the Ted Constant Center in Norfolk, and really would like to talk to the board tonight in three areas as to how they compare. One area being seating, the other area being cost, and then finally climate. In terms of seating, the Ted has a total of about 3,000 more seats than the Pavilion does. We would probably look to chop that in half and have about 1,500 more available seats as they typically do not seat folks behind the stage for commencement ceremonies. And that's including the concert seating, which would be on the floor behind the graduates. So there'd be a difference of about 1,500 net seats. For what it would mean to our graduates, let's say a class of 300 kids, that could conceivably mean five additional graduation tickets. Conceivably. And 300 is generous because classes at Norcom and I believe Wilson was just shy. 300 is a ballpark. In terms of cost, the Ted would charge us $6,000 per graduation on a single day for $18,000. There would be $500 in fees for each one of those for $1,500. And I requested catering, as we would be there all day. Aramark Food Services, their catering company, would do that for $650. So that would net total $20,150. The Pavilion last year came in at just a little bit over $38,000. Now, to be fair, we did not do a single date at the Pavilion. And I do not know what it would have cost us if we had done all three graduations. We did three separate ceremonies, and I'm sure that impacted costs. So I'd caution the board from seeing that as being half off. It may not necessarily have been the case if we proposed to do all three graduations in a single day. Lastly, climate goes without saying, the favor there goes to the constant. It's an indoor environment, it's a controlled climate. I will remind the board that we had three different climates, so to speak, for graduation this year.
Really?
I mean, three consecutive days, three very different atmospheres. I mean, we had the cold and wind at Wilson's, we had what I would describe to be ideal weather for an outdoor venue, the first night for Norcom, and then we had blazing hot and bright for Churchland.
Yep.
You'd think that we would have done them months apart, but those were three consecutive days in early June Hampton Roads. So the climate favor would naturally go to the Ted. Doing all three graduations in a day will be uncharted territory for us. I think there's an efficiency that comes to that. I think that that would be a possibility even if we continue at the Pavilion. But there are some distinct advantages as it pertains to additional seating and climate control at the Ted.
The question, the survey, because I've been asked by a lot of people who are the old guard of Portsmouth, you know, they want us to stay in Portsmouth. Yes, sir. And I said, I'm going to be honest with you. I am going, I want to know what the parents of the graduates of 2018, what do they want? Because it's really, we're doing this for them, not so much for the old guard, because, you know, you want to keep things in Portsmouth. It would be nice to keep things in Portsmouth.
Absolutely.
But I don't know, Mr. Houston, do you have, do y'all have any results from the survey that you could share with the board about? I'm really particularly interested in the parents of the students that will be graduating.
Absolutely. If you'll excuse me reading from my phone, I will just recap some of the highlights of the results I sent a few weeks ago. About 31 percent of participants, and these were, we sent a survey, a two-question survey, Rebecca.
Right.
We sent a two-question survey to parents of rising seniors to ask them about whether they'd like to have the graduation at the Constant Center or the Pavilion. 31 percent of those participants voted to keep the ceremony at the Portsmouth Pavilion, and 69 percent of participants voted to move it to the Ted Constant Center in Norfolk. That's generally.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, I know that you have not had an opportunity, since this is your first board meeting, to meet with any of your colleagues, your other students. But I did, I think I did, I think you did post your feeling about, on Facebook, that you, I think you were in favor of going to the Ted. Have you had an opportunity, since you've been back in school, for any of the students to address this with you?
Well, I have been talking to a lot of students, basically introducing myself and telling them who I am.
Right.
And I have talked to a lot of seniors about the move, whether they're in favor of it. And I've heard resoundingly that they are in favor of moving.
To the Ted.
Personally, yeah. Personally. I also would like to keep it in Portsmouth, because we are Portsmouth.
Right.
If the Ted's going to be overall better, in my eyes, it's clear to move, but, I mean, you guys have.
Any board members who would like to make? Mr. Lamb?
Yes, Dr. Cromartie, I know you had said that we hadn't looked at the cost difference of 20,000 and 38,000, and that we really haven't looked at pursuing if we all had it on one I'm just sitting here thinking about, if we had it on one day, I'm even thinking of just the logistics because of the space. I mean, to have it one day and you space out each ceremony.
Yes.
To where you got maybe a two, the max, three-hour gap. I'm just thinking of space and the logistics of trying to move one group out and one group in. Can you speak to, and again, I understand you haven't.
Yes.
Had a study on it.
Yes, sir.
But to me, it just looks like this would be much more of a problem.
We would propose a ceremony to begin at nine in the morning, and then we would have a ceremony that would begin in one in the afternoon, and then the final one would begin at four in the afternoon. So we'd have the time from 11 to 1 for lunch and sort of refreshing. There'd be the second ceremony at 1 o'clock, and then we'd have the final ceremony from 4 to 6. So that would allow two hours. They averaged about an hour and a half apiece. Admittedly, that would, if people would get out quickly and not hang out and take pictures and do all the other wonderful things that people like to do and should be able to do at a graduation venue, I think that the Ted would accommodate that because there's more parking there.
Right.
For people to be able to do that. I can see that that would create a challenge for us downtown, here.
Dr. Bracy?
And to add to that, Suffolk does everything in one day at the Ted now. I spoke with Dr. Whitney about it, and I think they use 9, 12, and 3. And he said, once the ceremony is over with, you know, everything ends, you know, the ushers and everything there, within, you know, just start, you know, sort of escorting everyone out and clears the parking deck, and then the other group has time to move in. So it can work, it does work, because they're doing it. So when we was talking about going through that, I wanted to talk with him because I know they do the exact same thing, have the exact same number of high schools. So in meeting and talking with him, you know, I didn't, I felt that we could duplicate that if we were going to move it to the Ted.
Through there.
Right. And I did, to the question that was posed about doing one day here. If we talk about the refreshments and everything that we would have to put in place, in speaking with Dr. Patton on the cost, it would be around the same, it would be around the same number.
About 38,000?
No, 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 no.
About where we are with the Ted. Right.
You just won't have the other amenities of the climate control and the additional seating. But doing everything in one day does reduce it, but you're still going to have to deal with the element and everything else that is out of our control.
And the logistics.
Right, and, right, exactly.
I failed to mention that the Ted would also provide security and two uniformed university police officers. That's their standard for these type things.
Ms. Hines, and then Reverend Patillo.
Thank you. Dr. Cromartie, speaking of the staff at the Ted, do they have their mistress of cer, I call it a mistress of ceremonies because I've been married, but somebody that's going to run around and get everybody in place? Because I know when we do it here at the Pavilion, we have staff, we have graduating staff. It's an extra burden on the teachers that are trying to make sure everybody's in place and, you know, the time is right. Will their staff handle that? Because they are a well-oiled machine when it comes to that.
They are a well-oiled machine, and they will have ushers. But what we can do is we can get in the 15th, the day before, for rehearsals, and we can schedule the rehearsals, have the kids come over and actually become familiar with the ambiance of the place. And we can actually run through it a little bit, show them how we would want them to rise, how we would want them to proceed to the stage. We could do that on the 15th, or sometime that week.
I had a member of the community tell me that they went to the Ted for a graduation of 360 some odd kids, and they were in and out in 57 minutes. And so it was.
We probably won't do that.
Why? And I would say that I, this board member would be hesitant to book a whole day in June on the waterfront outside. Just my personal opinion.
I will tell you, the conversations that we've had with the folks at the Ted, they want us to have ownership of the ceremony. In other words, they're going to let us dictate pacing.
Okay.
And I like what Dr. Bracy said about a 9, noon, and 3, because that gives us three hours, and ceremonies typically last an hour and a half. So that would give folks more time to, even if it was here, that would give folks more time to take photographs and hang out before they dispersed.
Okay.
Zackerson?
Dr.
Oh, I'm sorry. Reverend Patillo, and then Zackerson.
Dr. Cromartie, I have a couple of questions. So do you have the cost for, like, video production at the Ted?
They did not charge that. That's not something that they include. We would have to arrange that in addition to. Now, our photographers will naturally have access to the stage and photograph kids as they're receiving their diplomas. I'm not sure if we had video, Channel 47 did video, Sheri, set me up.
He traditionally has handled recording graduation ceremonies. This year, IT and I have been discussing ways to livestream graduations.
Okay.
I know a lot of parents have asked about it. It's costly.
Yes.
I think the estimates we have, even just for the equipment to get started, is about $50,000.
Yes.
But we'd be able to Facebook lock, perhaps, but that's not the same.
And so I'm thinking on the lines of, when I have attended graduation, some schools have did, like, shout-outs on the board. So I guess on that line, is that included on the?
On the jumbotron there?
Jumbotron.
I don't believe that would be. I'm not really sure, and the board can certainly express its pleasure. I'm not certain that that would be something we would want. I can imagine that if it's something that we want to explore, I could pitch it, but I worry about where that might go.
Wait, Reverend Patillo?
My bad.
That's all right. Reverend Patillo, then it should have gone, okay.
I got you, go ahead.
One quick question.
Go ahead.
I know with Chesapeake schools, they still only allow six tickets. I just want to make sure we're guaranteeing that our families would get additional tickets with a larger space.
Logistically, they should get, and based on a class of 300, with 1,500 additional seats, each kid should get conceivably five additional tickets.
Okay. But we ought to give them more, having many of that.
Yes. And what I also will suggest, we always encourage, or we can encourage, if you've got a small family because you are here in the military and your relatives are in Nebraska and not likely to come here for graduation, kids will trade tickets or give tickets among themselves to accommodate larger families who are local. But this would start everybody out conceivably with five additional tickets.
Good question. Thank you. Ms. Allen?
One of the things that was attractive about the Ted was that, being as though it would be a concert setting, having that jumbotron so that you can actually see.
Yes.
So we didn't even inquire about that?
The jumbotron was not mentioned at any point in time. Now, it may be part of what they do. It may be included, and it just wasn't mentioned because I didn't ask.
I think it is, because in the conversation.
With additional charge?
I don't know about the additional charge. I think that, I believe that that may be included, because Dr. Whitney said that, you know, the parents enjoy watching the kids on the jumbotron going across the stage. So I know it was used. And as far as the cost, he didn't mention anything about additional cost for that.
I'd like confirmation on that before, I would just like some confirmation on that because if, say, for instance, they come back and say, you know what, it's going to be $10,000 to use a jumbotron.
I can tell you confidently, for the 16th of June, which is what we've proposed, we had wavered from the 16th and gone to thinking about maybe the 7th, and then ran into some roadblocks with the 7th. Two months went by, I was able to call them and request the 16th, and they were still open. I'm fairly confident that if they're going to try to assess us a cost for that, we can, if it's going to be a deal breaker, I'm sure they'll toss that in for us.
But how about we tell them to toss that?
They don't have an occupant on the 16th.
Well, let's just tell them to toss that in.
I believe they would.
Because I think that's, you know, if we go to the Ted and we don't have a jumbotron, so now it's almost as if you're still watching a dot go across the stage from a larger venue. You know, I'll be, I know people will rake me over the coals for voting for that because of the simple fact that, what was the case of moving it? I mean, I get the cold climate thing, but I'd rather sit in the cold and see the person graduate than sit in the air conditioner and still don't see the person graduate.
Well, take it. Reverend Patillo?
Are we going to have a proposal for us to see before we vote?
I actually am in possession of a proposal now. I did not bring it because I didn't think that you'd be voting tonight.
No, no, we're not. I'm sorry, but before we vote.
I can share that contract with Ms. Jameson.
And then I have the final cost for everything up there.
Yes, yes.
And whether or not we're getting the jumbotron.
Right.
The jumbotron is not mentioned on my current.
Right, but we're going to revisit that, so then they would have to make sure they give us another contract anyway.
I'm going to let them know that Ms. Angelina Allen insists.
That right, sir?
That we have a jumbotron functional that day.
I agree, I agree with that.
I concur.
Yeah. Well, I know that our church used the Ted this year because of logistics of V-Dot, anyway. And they did, they did charge us for the video, and we ran, we ran video for the service. You know, when you're singing, you've got the words on the, so I know that you're going to have to, but I don't, I don't recall it, because I remember the total cost is about, was about, total for us was about 26,000. But that included the use of the, but you've got to pay a media person there, because they have a person that will run it. So I think, once you call them, they will include that, but I don't think it's going to be cost prohibitive. I think we're going to get what we want.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I know, I know getting what we want, but it's just a matter of, you know, when people ask about the figure, and then if we're looking at now paying, and I'm sure it's a nominal fee, but I just want to make sure that what we're doing, that we are all on the, we all know exactly what it is.
I'd be surprised if there's an additional cost for that, for the jumbotron feature. I'd really be surprised. Now, I will seek clarity, because that's what you've asked me to do, but I'd be surprised if there's an additional cost.
Ms. Williams?
No, I was going to say that everybody wants a jumbotron. We're going to have the jumbotron. Joseph said he's been to many graduations there. There's always a jumbotron. So just make sure it's in the contract.
Yes.
And whatever its cost.
Right.
We're going to vote to pay.
Right, exactly.
We want the jumbotron.
Now, I did have a community leader ask me to ask this question, and I'm going to bring it up. Have we asked the city, or whoever is in charge, I guess maybe the city manager's office, or who is in charge of the operating of the Ted, to allow Portsmouth Public Schools to use it at no cost?
You mean a villain?
You mean in tell us.
I mean tell us, excuse me, in tell us.
Yes.
You've asked that question. You've asked that question.
I've talked with Dr. Patton about that, and she said that that's not a city, um, yeah, someone else operates that.
Right.
So, they can't waive the cost. The city can't waive those costs.
All right, now, I'll ask the question.
Yeah, that's already been, right.
Okay, all right, that's up to discussion. All right, moving on. 3.6, roll call vote, consideration of requests to increase purchase as a sole source language live from Boarder Topress Learning Incorporated. Doctor Bracy?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, move for approval, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I've got a few questions. Is there, I know we talk about data in the, in the thing, in the contract about how it's been, you know, helpful. My question is, how helpful do we see it? And I'm not necessarily talking about SOL growth, because when we talk about reading, sometimes we're talking about SOL, sometimes we're talking about grade level, grade level, moving, moving reading levels. And so, that would be my, my first, my first question.
And, and let me just add, Dr. Cromartie has that data for you, but I want to also add that this is a response to a conversation that we had in a previous board meeting, where we did present the data, and the principals wholeheartedly indicated that they wanted an expansion of this-
Okay.
Along with the input from special education. So, this is not a new request. This is a request that we actually initiated last year. And because there was such a tremendous increase in the data across the board with our special education students, we decided to expand it, and the board, in fact, and I believe, Ms. Dr. Hines, that you were the person who raised the question as to whether or not we could do that.
Sounds about right.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, the data.
The next question, if I can add to that, since we have that coming around, is, I see that we've purchased 20 seats at every school. Are there certain schools that would be, that would have a, a bigger impact if they had more? Because as we talk about equity versus equality, that's what I'm looking at. And so, looking at schools that we traditionally struggle with, would it be beneficial to up the ante at some of those schools for, for their sake? And that's, you know, to see 20, 20, 20 going across the board for our elementary schools, while I'm happy about it, at the same time, I know we have elementary schools that have bigger challenges than others. And so, that, that is just my only-
The, the program is really geared toward students, exclusively towards students with special needs.
Okay.
Students who are outside of that realm, this is not proven to be useful for those students.
Okay.
So, every school that it has, has in excess of 20 students with special needs. Literacy is also, as we all know, an area in which we continue to have struggles amongst, among all students, more specifically, amongst students with special needs. I don't think we'll have a problem with fidelity with 20 seats at every school, and that could range from, I mean, using the elementary schools, that would span from Churchland Elementary to Brighton Elementary.
Okay.
I think we'll use it to fidelity. You had asked about the data, and I think that you thought that that's what we're passing around, actually, isn't it?
Yeah, no, that was-
I can, I can quote some of the data for you, if you're interested in that.
Well, this is a contract, I have a contract, I don't, okay.
That's not a contract.
Okay.
He doesn't have it. That's for the next item.
Got it. I'm like, wait a minute, data con- okay.
And we, we, we tested this last year at our three middle schools. We ended up, I believe, with 66 licenses.
Okay.
And contextual fluency, for example, kids showed growth pre-test, post-test at every benchmark, and we benchmarked three times a year. The first benchmark, we grew from fifth percentile to 13th, fourth percentile to 12th in the second, 12th to 40th in the third.
Okay.
And that was in contextual fluency. In terms of spelling, ninth percentile to 13th in the first, ninth to 10th minimal in the second, and then 21st to 40 in the end. So, we're talking about moving kids from a ninth percentile to a 40th percentile-
Right.
-in the span of an academic year.
And any movement, in my opinion, that is forward is, is growth.
It's good movement.
You know, you, you never want to see things go backwards. So, any, any growth that we can get is wonderful for any of our students.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And can I just back up to on your previous question about the 20 slots per school? We allocated 20 slots per school. However, we have the ability to move those slots around to schools.
Okay.
For instance, if we know that we only need 10 slots at Churchland Elementary, and we can use an additional 10 at another school, we can move them to that other school. But we want it to be equitable in initially providing those slots for each school, because it is for our special needs population.
Okay.
And to be totally candid, the, the slots are by child, not by license.
Right.
So, if we are going to do some movement in between, that has to be a determination that's made on the front end-
Right.
-because the licenses are sold by kid.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion than the other question before we vote? Hearing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes?
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patel?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Ms. Janamus?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion update on budget meetings. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Harren. As you all are aware of, Dr. Patton and I have been meeting over the past couple of weeks to have discussions on the, on our budget as far as the fiscal year 18 appropriation and the fiscal year 17 reappropriation. And we have received, and I think I sent you the email, our July and August appropriations. They have been submitted, and we will receive those at the end of each month. What we've been focusing on was the, the reappropriation. And our, my meetings with Dr. Patton have, have been going well. I think she understands the needs that we have within the school division, and why it takes time to, to sometimes expend some of those funds. I think initially, there was some concern about when we were, when the perca sources were created. It, it gave the impression that we were just trying to do something at the end to just spend funds that we hadn't spent up to that point, but that was not the case. And I was able to share that with her through our conversations that we've had one-on-one with her CFO and with Ms. Dorch, with me, just sharing what our overall plan was. So, as far as reappropriation goes, she's doing some revisions to her, her CMRs that she will submit to the council, but based on what we've discussed and what we have, not that, what, what we understand, she and I, it, it, it looks favorable for us as far as reappropriation. You know, I, I have to wait for her to get approval from, from council, but once she gives me the revisions, from what we have, I guess you could say, agreed to, what we have viewed, that I think we will be pleased with the reappropriation with what we originally asked for. So that we will not be in this situation again next year. We want it to come together and just sort of look at some type of compact or agreement that we can have, that we can sort of spell out, so that next year, around April or May, when we are at the end of the fiscal year, and we know we have items that, that have already been encumbered, that it won't be an issue come June, when it's time for them to have the meetings for reappropriation. So, that's why we, we have the, the compact. And what I want to do is to go over this with you, and if it's something that you don't understand or need additional information on, I can try to explain to you the purpose of that. And I'll do that, I'll, I'll take the first one first. And this, this is, this is something that has been revised by us, Ms. Dorch and I, several times before we even got to this point. So, I don't want you to think that this was, this was a one-shot deal, and, and this is it. So, we've gone back and forth with, with one another, because as you know, that we have our ideas of what's best for us, you know, they have their ideas of what's best in terms of the way they see budgeting. So, we thought that we would try to come up with some, with some items here. So, the first one is, we agree to a transparent budgeting process. Portsmouth Public Schools administration agreed to clearly identify and explain school needs during this annual budget process. The process will allow the school division and the city's financial teams to make sound financial recommendations to their respective governing bodies. So, basically, what we're saying is that we will, we will have meetings throughout, throughout the year, not just with the liaisons, but with the financial committees on both sides, coming together as well, so that they'll know well in advance before, as I mentioned in June, of what our intentions are. And I think with our finance teams meeting throughout the year could help alleviate some of the confusion that we ran into this year. Ms. Allen, that's the blow, Mr. Harren.
The "we" where it says, "We agree to a transparent budgeting process," is the "we" as in Portsmouth Public Schools, we're doing that, or is it the city and Portsmouth Public Schools?
It's, it's all of us, every, everybody, um-
Can that language say the city and Portsmouth Public Schools?
Sure, sure. And I guess it's "we" because we both have to sign it, the city and-
I understand that, but then that next thing is Portsmouth Public Schools, which leaves me to feel like we, we weren't transparent from the gate. So, the "we" should be them and us.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
Not a problem.
I mean, I'm just making a suggestion from my level of comfort.
Yes, yes.
When I read that, I was like, what, what are you saying?
Okay. Good point. Yeah.
I'm going to make a vocabulary lesson real quick. Please define transparent, and how is that any different than what we have done over the past three years? Please tell me how we can be any more transparent, other than allowing them to have hands in our pots? And that's not going to happen. So, when I, I know when I speak to my children about having a respectful classroom, my definition of respect is different than their definition of respect. So, I'm going to ask, what is our definition of transparent? What is their definition of transparent? And what level of transparency are we agreeing to? Because I don't know what else I can do as a board member and as a piece of this board to make it even more transparent. They get monthly cash sheets. We have budget meetings starting two weeks from now for the next year budget. I, to back up one more, am not happy with this, because in my opinion, boards talk to each other in memorandums of understanding and regulation sheets. So, this is completely out of the norm in how boards talk to each other. But I'll play along, but I'm going to go for a vocabulary lesson first. Can we please explain transparent to me?
If I may piggyback off of that, then let me go down further, where it says, clearly I thought we, I, what is it that they want to identify? Because we, when we ask for the needs, we're asking for it in the sense of, we need this for this category, we need this for this category. Are they wanting a line item of everything that we want to use the money for? What does that mean?
Are we still on number one, or we don't?
Yeah.
We're still on the first one.
And, and some of this that's in here doesn't mean that we're not doing it, but for the sake of everyone coming together, we're just saying, this is what, this is what we're going to do. Because, you know, that was shared with, with Dr. Patton and her team. We do these things.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we do it, but just, everybody just looking at it themselves.
So, then it goes into then where it says, the process will allow the school divisions and the city financial teams to make sound financial recommendations to their respective governing bodies. So, once there's the discussion, and you say, we need this, are they then recommending what maybe you may not need? What is it that, once we tell them what we need, are they then trying to kind of fine-tune what they think we should need?
They can't do that.
But I'm just, I'm just reading it how it is, and I'm just wanting a clarification of what exactly does this mean, once we, once we clearly identify-
We can be here a minute.
And explain.
Let's take the example of, of, I guess what got us into this, this point, and that was them saying that we needed to use our textbook funds to cover the interactive panels. So, when we're meeting throughout the year, and we share with them that, look, we're, we're going to be purchasing, you're going to see a purchase, but you may not see it encumbered until April, because there are certain things that we did do, we need to do prior to getting approval and moving forward with it. So, for us to share, this is what we're going to do, is merely an understanding so they would know, not for them to approve, and not for them to say that we can't do it, but at least having the dialogue there-
Okay.
-to, to spell that out.
Ms. Hines, to answer your question, if you look at the very top, it says, the city of Portsmouth slash Portsmouth Public Schools. It's a compact. Understand the, the difference between a compact and a memorandum of understanding, but it's an agreement to bring both parties together, because we need to be brought together. They do not have, and you can correct me, our attorney, you can correct, but it is, it is not their responsibility, it is their responsibility to allocate funds to the school board. They cannot tell the school board how to use those funds.
Correct.
That's, that's code, is that not right?
The, the school board decides on the methodology for using their monies. The city decides on what amount of money it will allocate to the school.
Right. Ms. Williams?
Well, it, it might be better to change the, is this already done between the two-
It's not, nothing.
Well, maybe you could start the first sentence off by saying Portsmouth Public Schools will continue its transparent budgeting process, because we've always been transparent, I assumed. Instead of saying, we agreed to a transparent, I'd want us to say that we have always been transparent and will continue-
Correct.
-to be transparent.
We have open meetings, we have public meetings, we, I mean, we're, anyway.
And I think we always clearly identify and explain the school needs or whatever.
Right.
Maybe just change that, so it won't look like we're just starting to be transparent.
God bless you.
Because as Sarah was saying, we, we can, we give them the cash reports, the monthly reports, every month. I don't think they look at them, but they do receive them.
Any other, Dr. Whitaker?
Can we go down to, one, two, three, four?
Can we, can we take each one?
All right.
When you get to that one, we try to get, we try to get through this.
But I agree with the continue.
I like that.
But, yeah, but I just want to go on record, I don't, I don't know if I agree with the idea of this. To me, it's kind of like a slippery slope, but we'll go one of the-
Ms. Williams?
I was going to say, if the compact works to get us the reappropriated funds that we need this year?
Okay.
We'll go all jaw and hands.
Nothing said. Okay.
Oh, you finished, Ms. Williams? Oh, you finished. Mr. Life?
Um, yes. I guess, I mean, I, I'm hearing a lot of different dialogues and whatnot, but I am curious with what I'm hearing from Dr. Whitaker and Ms. Hines a little bit. I mean, we're calling it a compact, I mean, to me, um, is this-
Call it whatever you want.
Is Dr., well, I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking, I mean, is this unusual? Well, I mean, is this unusual? Is this how usually two boards communicate? I mean, I, I think that this has been a good, with what they're bringing up, I mean.
You know, I, I'm just thinking that, you know, in the previous, with previous boards, where they did the resolution-
Mm-hmm.
-that it was 75, at the end of the year, it would be 75, 25.
Right.
You know, that was how it was done, they don't do it.
Right.
So, I don't think it's anything that's legally binding, but if there, if there is a way that we can come to some kind of agreement with this city-
Right.
-then at the end of the year, we don't have to go through-
Right.
-what we went through these past few weeks and months, then I think that's, that's pretty good, even if I'm not skipping down to the 112 back.
I know where you're going.
But that's better than what they were, you know, we can give them 112 back, and they put it in CIP, that's, that's great, instead of them taking it all. And they do have that privilege. I mean, that is up to them, the way they vote, to do whatever. So, if Dr. Bracy is able to work with the current city manager, and she can work this through council, where at least he would know, and the CFO would know something about what's-
And I think this piece of paper that Dr. Bracy and Dr. Patton, it's in good faith that both parties are working together. It's just a piece of paper that shows that the Portsmouth School System and the, the city will come together, will work together. There is nothing binding about this document.
Okay.
That's my understanding, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, just to follow-
And then, Mr. Reverend Fleming?
Just a follow-up question, that in the first point, the last sentence, this process will allow school divisions, cities, financial teams to make sound financial recommendations. I've been under the impression that both teams, or Dr. Bracy and, and city manager Patton was already having ongoing meetings anyway throughout the year already. So, I guess my question is, if we're already doing that, having those meetings, you know, ongoing now, how is this going to, I guess, how would this improve upon that? Or are we talking about having even more meetings? Or, do you understand what I'm asking? I mean, if you're, if you're having ongoing meetings now, it's kind of hard for the process to, I would think, for the process to break down if you have ongoing meetings. So, what would be different than what's already going on?
I think what, what would be different is that we, we sit down now, and we're, we clearly have an agenda item that we're, that we're focusing on. You know, when we sit down, yes, we talk about budget, we talk about planning, but I went through all of that, and we still ended up where we were back in June, July, as if there wasn't any dialogue. So, to prevent the same thing happening again, then we know we're going to talk about end of year funds. We know we're going to talk about, and if, and if I share with her, and I'll go back to the interactive panels, and say that, look, we're going to use, we got, we got, let's say we have $3 million that's, that's not encumbered as of May 1st, but that is our intention, because that is our need. but that is our intention because that is our need. Now, it could be, could be Chromebooks or whatever the case may be. So when we sit down, they'll know that. So that, the, given the impression that you just did that because you, you needed to spend the money, um, before the end of the year. So if they know that, Dr. Patton can take this back to council and say, "No, they're not, they're not just spending money just for the sake of spending it. They have a plan in place, and this is how and why they wanna use the funds this way." It clearly gives the opportunity for us to have that discussion, and like I said, don't forget, I'll be meeting with, um, her, she and her CFO, along with the city's financial team and our financial committee as well throughout the year, and these things will come up. So it won't just be on this last, um, uh, bullet that we have about when we, when we meet, uh, sixty days, sixty days prior to the fiscal year. We'll, we'll, we will meet sixty days prior, but that won't be the first time that, that has been a discussion item. So it, it, it provides a little bit more focus to our meetings, and because I think that, I think everybody, well, I think Dr. Patton sees, you know, how we got to this point. Because even now, when, you know, she talks about having the budget engagement meetings, you know, as a division, we had the budget engage, engagement meetings, but the people who attend don't have an interest in Portsmouth Public Schools. When I say interest, I don't mean they don't have kids. So, they're not gonna vote to give the schools additional funds for anything, because that's not a priority for them. So why would we put all of that, put all of our energy into that particular one event, when we know it's not gonna be something that's gonna be productive to us at that setting? When we pass out the interactive panels and they do the voting, the on-site voting. Now, some of it, of course, is done online, where you can go and, and, and complete the survey, but those are the type of conversations that, that I would have with her. And like I said, we're already, she's already mentioned having those, um, community engagement meetings, but right now, I, we, we have to figure out how that's gonna be beneficial to us, because I don't see them changing their mind from what they'd said last year and going into, for this year.
Because they've said the same thing for two years, I'm sorry.
All right. Reverend Fleming, then Reverend Patullo, then Mrs. Allen, and then Mrs. Williams.
And I don't wanna prolong what I'm going to say, but when I'm looking at this and looking at the word compact, number one, I see forced, so that's my definition of compact, forced, forced together. And, uh, then I look down and see that the mayor is signing this, you're signing this, Mr. Chair, Dr. Patton and Dr. Bracy, and it says, "Sign into agreement." This, this seems to be, um, something else. This, this, this has a bad taste, um, based upon what we've just seen this summer in the media. And the community is, is going to have a different perspective if we have to sign something like this. Because I would love for you to ask the board if we had signature lines with any of us signing this. I would love for you to ask that question, because my answer is no.
Reverend, Reverend Patullo?
I, I do agree with a change in the verbiage on the first, uh, on the first point, uh, to continue. And I also agree with Ms. Williams that if, if this gets us the money, um, I, I understand. The only thing that brings me a little comfort about the whole compact is that we're not agreeing to change anything. It looks like for the most part, to me, it seems like this is, is, is a public, like a public showing of.
Cooperation.
Yeah, partnership is what I, is what I'm thinking that's trying to be portrayed with this, uh, document, because half we're already doing, and the other half is basically saying, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're gonna sit down and talk, we're gonna sit down and discuss. You know? Right, I mean, 'cause. Yeah, I'm just being clear that we're not agreeing to change anything, correct? I'm just, I'm reading it correctly.
Well, I mean, you just brought up one word, a partnership, instead of a compact, if, depending on, I'm gonna ask that question, Reverend Fleming, in a few minutes. But if you change the word compact to partnership, does that make a difference? But I'll, I'll continue, um, Ms., uh, Ms. Allen, and then Ms. Williams.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Who brought this to the table? Who, who brought this to the table? Where, where did this originate?
She wanted the document itself? Idea.
Thank you.
We wanted to have something to capture the meetings that we did over the past couple of weeks, in terms of, um, talking about why we weren't receiving funds, and looking at ways to prevent this. Because just meeting, just having a meeting and not capture, capturing, um, what came out of that wouldn't be productive. So we just, we were trying to put something in place of what we discussed and, and try to come up with some preventative ways in terms of, um, how we would not find ourselves in the same situation again. And, you know, just speaking with Mr. Meekins, um, you know, with the signatures, I mean, that's something that, that can be removed.
I don't have a question about the signatures.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying that, but the, but, but as far as the, but as far as the agreement or compact or even discussions, I mean, this could be just something that Dr. Patton and I look at. You know, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be something that, that, that both boards have to agree on. But I think we need to have something in place, because, I mean, it, it, when we look at it, I know there's give and take with everything. And I'm not saying that we give up anything, but we're asking them to give us the full reappropriation back. And I think in terms of what, what we're, what they're asking us to do is just to, to listen, to be, to consider. Like, for instance, the, the risk management, board has already said that we're not going to do it, but they at least wanted us to hear them out.
Here is my concern, number one, and, and I understand that, you know, I feel like, now I feel like, if we don't do this, we may not get our reappropriation. I don't wanna be forced into doing something against something that you should give us in the first place, because this was how it's always been done, without there being a change in how this is gonna be done. I don't wanna feel like that this was what this is. I don't also wanna see this as a tool next budget season, "Well, you agreed to do this, you agreed to explore this. We are already saying, we have already said, if I'm not mistaken, we're not interested in the risk fund situation together." We, if I'm not mistaken, we have already kind of said that. So why are we once again revisiting that again, unless somebody is saying that they wanna change that? Lastly, all this time you and Dr. Patton have been making meetings, is there not an agenda? Because to me, if there is an agenda which you guys are meeting on, even if you need to take two clerks in there and kind of make sure we're all hearing the same thing, then why do we need this? If there's no agenda in coming back to the table with you guys are meeting with, then what is the purpose of you meeting? If there's nothing, if, because you guys met this whole time, and then look what happened. But there is nothing that says, "Well, during our meetings, you agreed to this, I agreed to this." There's nothing anywhere that's really saying, so now, from the public perspective, of course, there's, there, they may say, "We're gonna give you the money, we're not gonna give you the money." There's no definition or no definitive answer as to what's happening, and the only people that are meeting are you and her.
Are you thin, have you finished?
I think so.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Well, I, I might be able to answer that, they can meet all day. They, they are just like we are. Dr. Patton can say whatever, she has to take it back to council at their meeting, and they have to vote in, in, in open meeting. So maybe, they, they can still, you know, they, I think the instruction from you and, uh, the, the request from the chairman was, would they please put off the vote?
Right.
So that they could meet, and, and I guess this is what, this is, was the result of that. I, I, my, my concern is that this is just not a document where, uh, the city will feel like they have the right to micromanage our budgeting process.
That's what I'm afraid of.
And I do know that other city departments have been asked, uh, somehow they want to monitor their, and that's fine, they're city departments. But I do know other departments has, that they've gotten these memos or instructions where they wanna monitor their, their individual budgets. So, I mean, this transparent process, and, um, I don't, I hope they're not thinking they can go into your unit six system or anything like that to monitor what you're spending and all of that, 'cause that's, that's not even worth us wasting our time with this piece of paper. And, um, because in the past, the city has agreed to allocate a certain amount of money to us. It's up to the superintendent and the board as far as how they.
Yep.
Spend those funds. What we are asking for, and I agree with Ms. Allen, we don't need to do anything where we feel like, if we don't do this, we're not getting that. Or they come back next year and say, "You didn't merge your risk management, so we're not giving you nothing." They need to do what's right by the school system. And if they can't do it, then we need to take it to the public. And we took it to the public.
We did.
And then we get these calls that we need to be quiet. No, freedom of speech, we speak up. And we speak for these children.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not about being quiet, I mean, Facebook was, we were rocking and rolling.
Yes, we were.
We were, yes.
And we were all saying the same thing, sorry.
They could not take it. So, and it was truth, it was no lies, it was the truth. So, uh, you know, at this point, I guess the board is saying, this is just, you're saying, this is something you and Dr. Patton came up with. And. So that's fine, that's between you and Dr. Patton. But is she recommending to the council that they reappropriate the money that you're asking for? Or are you telling us?
It's not, it's not contingent.
It's not contingent on this?
No, no.
Okay.
That, that's never been said. Yeah.
Mrs. Hines, and then Dr. Whitaker, and then Mr. Lamb?
Okay, a- and I know we were trying to stay on bullet number one, but I'm looking at the overall piece of this, and I don't wanna be here till eleven o'clock either. It's the first week of school, and I'm like to go home like everybody else here. As I look over this, and I hear what everybody is saying, um, so, this time of the year, when I have students come in to my classroom, I say, "What can I expect from you, and what can you expect from me?" Okay? So as I'm looking at this, I'm looking at this right this minute with expectations. So number one, meetings, set an agenda, have somebody keep the minutes, so that we have a running record. I don't need this to tell me what y'all are gonna talk about. If we're having, if we're having agendas, if we're having meetings and we have agenda, and we have somebody take minutes, or we have agreed upon minutes, a Google Doc where both of you can log in and type in what it is that you, what's going on, there, there's ways around this without us having to feel bullied. You know, and I hate to use the word bully, but I feel like I'm getting nothing out of this, other than signing a sheet of paper, saying that I'm doing what I'm already doing in here, as far as the budget process. Number two, the other thing I'm taking away from this is the, is the definition of encumbrances. Because we do not have an agreed-upon definition of encumbrances. And, and I, I don't wanna be the one that says, "I've asked, and I've asked, and I've asked," but I have asked, what, what are the agreeances here on encumbrances? And until we have a definition of encumbrances, we can meet ninety days, a hundred and eighty days, thirty days, fifteen days, and talk about what is unspent funds, but we need to have a working definition of what our encumbrance policy is. Because they're held to one ba- bar, we're held to another bar, and we get caught in the middle because they, we don't have an agreeance. So I just want.
Wait a minute, let me, let me. Their, their definition of encumbrance, and I'm gonna read it to you. "As stated in the city ordinance, twenty sixteen dash thirty, funds encumbered but unpaid by the end of the fiscal year will be deemed unspent appropriation that will require reappropriation by the city council." Now, Mr. Meekins, we have, this board passed a policy, and we said a hundred and twenty days. So.
And bless you.
Bless you.
And bless you. Now, does that, is that policy just, I mean, that's the board's policy. Can the city council overrule the board, the board's policy?
Well, the real issue is what the state codes are.
Right.
And so, I mean, neither, we, we all can put our definitions on what the state code representation for unspent monies are, and they take one definition and.
Right.
Prove it out to another, so I don't, but I do find it interesting, by the way, that in this, uh, agreement, whatever this is, this compact, they list unspent funds and encumbrances, so they recognize that the two are different.
But even unspent funds is sitting as in a risk management fund, just because they are unspent does not mean that they are unspoken for. Because we have, that money has to sit somewhere. It's unspent, but it's, it's still in an account for expenditures that may happen, and that we have to have in order to be insured, that we have to have that money that's sitting there. So just because it's unspent doesn't mean that it's.
But it's their definition of and requirement of us.
But anyway.
We could sit around this table all night long.
We have to have it working.
And the other thing is that when the mayor called me and said the board, I mean, the council is going to postpone the vote, he said, "Go back and read the GASP, and it's Government Accounting Standard Board, Mr. Parrot," because this is where we're coming from, and I'm gonna read it to you. "The Government Accounting Standard Board, GASP, interpretation number six, requires that under the modified accrual basis of accounting, governments should recognize expenditures in the period in which the government receives the goods or services."
So if that's the case, I'm gonna jump down to this one that says one twelve, and I'm gonna ask for more money upfront. Because the amount of money that we are asking for back is a month and a half of our last payments. You cannot give us money on June the twentieth and expect us to, to buy and receive and close out a PO on the thirtieth. If I get four point three million dollars in a month, and I'm asking you, city council, for five point eight or five point four, that's basically my month of June back. So if, so, I, I, I'm not done, I got a list. I, I was quiet, I made a list, so hang tight. We can agree to discuss unspent funds, and that would be done through a meeting and through an agenda, and that can be done. I don't need you to sign a piece of paper, or you to sign a piece of paper, to do your job. And the last one is, if we wanna revisit risk management, and this is just my opinion, if we wanna revisit risk management, the only way I will consider it is if our risk management people that run our risk management, and I believe that is Wells Fargo. Bay Corp sits down with their person.
It came before the board.
They came before us, but did they sit down with council, and council's person? Because I'm not a specialist in risk management, and city council is not a specialist in risk management. So put the two risk management people together and let them come to us collectively with their recommendations.
Council is not a member of Bay Corp.
Then there's gotta, if there's not a way to merge it, then there's not a way to merge it, and it's a moot point.
They have a. They have a person, um, that they would bring, and we would, we would have our consultant come as well.
Now I'm done with my list, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get loud at you.
Dr. Whitaker, no, it's okay, Dr. Whitaker, and then Mr. Lamb, and then Mrs. Williams.
At some point, you have to stand on principle and not back down. And to me, this is like backing down. When, when the, um, press conference was called, I thought that was standing on principle, standing up for the students, and what was right. Now, city council, there are members of city council who are going to vote how they want to vote. No matter what we sign.
Right, exactly.
They're gonna vote how they're gonna vote. So, you know, I don't, I, to me, that's, like I said before, this to me is like a slippery slope. It sounds like, um, kind of the entryway for micromanagement and other types of things. So, um, we just need to, I think, stand on principle and do what we need to do, um, you know, to get funding, and not back down.
Uh, Mr. Lamb, and then Mrs. Williams.
I find it, I, I, I.
I find it, I, I find it interesting, and I'm using that term very openly here, that we're still coming back to a discussion of encumbrances.
Yeah.
Because if I recall, and this was before many, well, many of us was on this board at that time, Council Meekins gave us a definition of what encumbrances was, and I know this was several years ago, of, of what, of what an encumbrance is. Basically, if you have money that is set aside for a product, and you've already got, say, that contract in play, and you're just waiting on for that product to come in so that it can be sent out, that is encumbered money.
Right.
That is how, how I understood the explanation from Council Meekins.
But let me interrupt you just a minute, there's a city ordinance that they threw at, that they throw at us, and then there is the GASP that they throw at us. It doesn't matter, to me, at this point, I'm frustrated in that it doesn't matter what we think, it's because they're the ones that have to do the reappropriating, and they're saying, "The only way we're going to do it is that you've got to follow these two," with the city ordinance, "and we've got to follow the GASP," and we are saying, "We've got to, we've got a, a policy." But then Mr. Meekins has said that he feels, that the only way we're going to ever resolve this as a board is that it's going to have, we're going to have to go to court.
And Chairman Parent...
And get, and get a legal interpretation.
Chairman Parent, if you were...
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. No, I mean, and, and I was going there with regards to, even though we've had this explanation of the encumbrances...
Right.
...years ago, and therefore, while this whole discussion, I'm not going necessarily to say it went away, but I guess it, it kind of...
It went away.
It went away, back burner, or whatever it was, for a while, and now we've got city code, which is saying one thing, which seems to have gone against that, but then we've got state code...
Right.
...which seems to be saying, saying something completely, I don't want to say different, but there's a lot of interpretation there. And the disappointing thing of all of this is that we've got a policy that's in place of 120 days, and yet, city code says 60 days, so I'm kind of looking at, at, at Council Meekins with regards to what, what trumps what. I mean, to me, it seems as though state code would be a higher than, than city code versus...
The state code is undefined, Mr. Lamb, that's the problem, we don't have a clear definition. We have a practical definition, I think school divisions all over the state use encumbrance in the way that we have typically used it, I doubt there's...
So, that's precedent.
But in conversations with other, with the VSPA, we've been told that some cities take back all the money.
Yeah.
Right.
So, the, the issue here, really, a, as it's put forward here, there are two different categories of money that they're willing to discuss.
Unspent and...
They're willing to discuss unspent money, which we all agree on what that is. There is no definitional loggerhead about what unspent money is. There is a definitional loggerhead about what the word encumbrance means. They say encumbered is the same as unspent.
Right.
But they, in this document, they indicated willingness to discuss both. And I, I would say, trying to imply what is happening here is what they have accused the board of in the past, prior to the times that most of you were on the board, was that at the end of the year, we started spending money on things we didn't need to spend money on, just to spend the money. And they want the 60-day window to make sure they know what we're going to be spending the money on. And that's the only thing I can, I can assume comes out of this. Not that they would object to it, they can't tell you not to do it, they want to know about it, I guess.
Ms. Williams, before you comment, Mr. George would like to make a comment, if you don't mind.
Um, I just wanted to clarify that the school system is following GASP.
Yes.
So, I, I want to make that very clear, so that no one thinks that we're not following accounting principles.
Right.
Um, second, the ordinance that the city passes is not a definition of encumbrance.
Correct.
What the ordinance is saying is that anything that is unspent and encumbered requires reappropriation. Then, the school board policy that we have, again, that's not a definition. The school board policy is just stating, whatever encumbrances we have, we need to have those clear, at least by October 31st of the subsequent year, and if they're not, they need to come back to the board to keep that order open. When it comes to the definition of an encumbrance from an accounting principal, the city and the schools are following the same definition. Where we're at right now is the fact that we have your ordinance, your ordinance says we need to ask for reappropriation of unspent and, and encumbered, and that is what we did. Now, we're just at a place where now we have a question on whether that's going to be reappropriated or not. So, I, I just wanted to just kind of add that to the conversation.
Right. Ms. Williams.
Has there been any discussion about reappropriating at least those funds that have been encumbered, that we've ordered, ordered merchandise, that we have to pay for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, they are willing to do those?
Right.
Okay. Mrs. Hines, did I say your angle?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so, my, what I'm going to say is this, I'm going to ask that we revisit the, the request to change the funding structure from 1/12th to a 30, 30, 30, 10, because we can't even call it quarterly appropriation if we're getting it monthly. That's an allowance, that's not an appropriation, in my opinion. So, I'm going to ask that we, we request and we dialogue with both bodies that we change the funding structure, because a 1/12th allotment does not allow us any time to plan ahead, it does not allow us any time to collect any funds and make these big purchases, not in June, and not in May, which is what we're getting slammed for, as the way that I understand it. The other thing I'm going to say is, we have an MOU from 2001 that says 75-25. That is what we are still working under, that is what we're still being, that we should be held to.
We're assuming that's what...
And so, my question is going to be more so for city council than for us, that if you don't want to do that, then you need to revisit your own MOU. But right now, we are still working under the guidance of that MOU, because there hasn't been one that's been updated. The other thing I'm going to say is, is if we cannot change the funding structure, I had a Snickers, so I'm not going to, I won't be as evil this time, if we're not going to be able to change the funding structure, can we pay for different items at different times? Could there be a way that at the end of the year, we're catching up on power bills, water bills, electric bills, where we've been able to save money and buy the bigger things ahead of time, so we're not getting slammed in May or June? And that's just going to be my...
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to ask this, I'm going to honor Reverend Fleming's request a few minutes ago, and I'm going to ask each board member, if you were to, tonight, because we can be here all night, because we, we just got to number one, if you, if you were to sign, if you were asked to sign this document, would you sign this document? I'm going to ask Ms. Akerson, would you sign this document?
No.
That's mine.
No.
Hines, Reverend Patello, would you sign this document?
No, I need some changes.
With some changes.
Yeah, but I, I, well...
Okay, I just want to go around the room, and then I'll go back to you.
I have my hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Dr....
No.
Mr. Lamb.
Well, after this discussion, and it's, the whole thing is open to interpretation and legal, how legal and so forth, no.
Okay. Ms. Ollie?
Uh-uh.
Reverend Fleming?
No.
Ms. Williams?
No.
And Ms. Parent?
No.
So, back to you, Reverend Patello.
I guess my, my, my thing is, it, is this contingent of, are we not, are we not going to get our reappropriation if, uh...
Now, it was never, it was never...
That's why I'm hesitant about whether I sign or not sign the things. At the end of the day, my, my main concern is making sure that we're able to pay our bills for the things we already received.
Mm-hmm.
It's the first, the first thing, and make sure we still be able to, to run the school division effectively. And Ms. Hines mentioned something about the MOU revisit. With that, I don't think we're going to operate none of that, because we haven't been getting 100% back, not 75, I don't want to go backwards.
Well, no, I don't want to go backwards either, but that is their, at their discretion.
Right.
At minimum, what we look at is a 75-25. If they give us back 100%, then that's, that's at their discretion by their vote. That's all I'm saying, that if, that if the rules of engagement are going to change, then this needs to change, because that is ultimately what it goes back to.
And if you looked at the ordinance from last month, that 75-25 was in that ordinance.
And with the, and with that, if we're going to plan our spending on only getting 75% of our reappropriation back, then that's going to change how we actually have to budget and spend also.
Right.
Because we can't spend until we're going to get, get it reappropriated back. I mean, I, I think it's going to be a lot more, it's going to be a lot more discussion, I think, with this whole thing.
Ms. Williams, then Dr. Black.
Well, you know, as they are so quick to point out every time I've been to one of the work sessions, it's what the grand jury report says.
Oh, gosh, not it.
Now, the grand jury report said quarterly appropriation, not monthly.
Yeah.
So, I don't know when they changed that to monthly, but it's one council member will always quote, the grand jury report said...
Right.
Quarterly, I mean, quarterly. So, how did it come to the 1/12th anyway? So, they're not following...
It equals the same. So, a one quarter of the payment equals the same as three.
They just pay it monthly.
Yeah.
No, it's the same.
Yeah, it equals the same.
Okay.
Okay.
But don't call it quarterly.
Don't call it... All right, Bracy. We can be here... Oh, I'm sorry, oh, sorry.
But just about the 1/12th, that's my question, that there doesn't seem to be, there, I don't know, there wasn't a vote by city council to do that? And so, are they even operating under, are they even operating legally by doing it that way?
Well, he's saying that they've been doing it for the last five years.
I think that's just something they did internally, as long as they gave us...
We don't know, we don't know how. We don't know how they...
I don't think they vote, they voted on that, I think it's something they did internally. And I was told by councilperson that that is to the benefit of the city.
Mm-hmm.
Because they hold on to our money longer, which helps them with their interest in all of this.
I have one legal...
All right, wait, have I, I got, Hines, all right. Okay.
Mr. Meekins, in your legal opinion, because, you know, I got to come, I got to come...
It's coming back to you, sir.
I got to come back to my, to my legal eagle here. With this compact and with signatures, to what, if this was to happen with revision, if that's the will of the board, what legal binding does that put us in, any more than what we're already bound to as a board anyway? Because as I read this, this is all stuff that we do anyway. So, I don't see that there's any, that there's anything that's going above and beyond what we're requested to do as board members, or what we're requesting staff to do to fulfill board member requests. What impact, well, not, I don't want to use the word impact, but by signing this, what does, what does it mean? If it were to be signed? I mean, I've never seen the word compact come across. If it's a gentleman's agreement, then it's a gentleman's agreement, but I think by signing it and having it in the, in the minutes of both councils or both boards, then this is, this would have some significance. So, please explain to me the significance and the legal tax that come with that.
Well, I saw this agreement at the same time you did.
Okay.
So, I haven't had a chance to do a lot of research and thinking about this, but I would tell you, my initial reaction to this is, and the thing I asked the superintendent is, why is the board's signature on here at all?
Mm-hmm.
This is really an operating agreement between the city manager and the superintendent as to how they would go about their, trying to appropriate, get funding in place for next year. This is, this doesn't bind the board, it can't bind the board, and the only thing I see in here that binds the city, or that could be binding, is the promise of a 1/12th appropriation. That would take, in my opinion, city council action, and I've never been clear that one city council, and I think the rule of thumb is, one city council can't bind another city council, so they next month could turn around and change that. So, I don't see this, at this moment, as a binding legal agreement. I see this as a framework for two administrations to work towards achieving what each thinks they need in the process. I don't see that you're bound by anything here.
Okay. Dr. Bracy, can I piggyback on that, Chair? Dr. Bracy, with that being said, this board hires you to do your job. Do you need this sheet of paper to do your job?
No, I don't need it.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Bill?
The reason I said, the reason I said that I didn't want, I mean, I, I would have to reword it, and I, with Cordell, almost voted with Cordell, in that it would have to be reworded. I just don't want this to be, that the board is not even interested in working with the city in a mutual understanding. Because to me, this is just, as I told Dr. Bracy, the words can just roll off, just roll off onto the floor, because when you use words like explore, I mean, this board has already said, "We're not going to merge," you've already said, "We're not going to merge risk management." So, why is this on this piece of paper? So, it's going back to things that we have already decided, as Vice Mayor Cherry has already said, the board, you can't tell the board, you know, you can't tell the board, because they've already voted, that they don't, they're not interested in risk management.
Right.
I just want, I think Dr. Bracy and Dr. Patton, if, if they've got a mutual understanding, and they're working together, and he brings back to us, because I think you're going to be getting, before not too long, you're going to go, you're going to be getting, I hope you're going to be getting the ordinances that are going to be presented Monday evening, and voted on, on Tuesday evening. So, I think what he was, what he's trying to do is, he and the city manager have been working diligently to resolve this, they came up with this compact to present to both parties, that we're going to, you know, we're all going to work together, so, I don't know.
Ms. Ollie.
And you know, I, I could appreciate this if it came after we knew what our reappropriation is. The timing of this, for me, is just concerning, because it feels like, and as we sat around this room, and if you go back and look at the table, at some point, it kind of gives the illusion, here you go, sign this, and, you know, we'll talk about reappropriation. At some point during the discussions there, that's the feeling I got. So, if this was a discussion we had after appropriation was done, and prior to us going into budget season, I could be a little bit more open. But just because I may not be open to this, it doesn't mean that I'm not open to working with the city and having a decent relationship. That's something that I think a lot of us, if not all of us, have always wanted.
Right.
But you start doing this, then what's to happen the next time something else comes up? Are we going to get another compact? Now, it's, now we're opening ourselves up to every time we want to do something, are we going to be presented with something along the lines? It just doesn't feel right to me, I wouldn't sign it, I'm not interested in it, let's, let's move, let's find out what we're going to do forward, and come to the table with everything clean. Either you're going to give us appropriation, you're not, but then we're all, we know what it is, and now we can move forward. But I don't want this hung over my head.
Correct.
All right. Go ahead.
I asked her to revise one, well, some language in one of the CMRs. You know, I could have sent those to you, but initially, there was, we found some things that were not, that shouldn't have been included in the CMRs that she was going to present for approval to the city council. She made those corrections, but there's one more piece in there that involves the, the interactive boards, but it does show appropriate, reappropriation, so that, that piece is there. Now, I can send you the, but I wanted to, I want, I didn't want to give you anything that would get you even more upset than, or disturbed.
Yes.
I didn't want to do that. I was trying to give her the opportunity to, to clean that up before that was sent out, because she's even had to pull some things that were already submitted to council herself, because the language that was in there was nowhere, anything that we had discussed. I think that was something that was probably already done before we started discussing I think that was something that was probably already done before we started discussing some of those. But as soon as that's revised, hopefully tomorrow, her CFO is out this week, but we did a conference call, um, earlier today, you know, I will get that to you, because with what you will see, as I mentioned, the reappropriation is there. So, I don't, I'm not going to say that it's binding, this was never, it was never a deal to say that if you don't do this, you're not going to get the funds, because based on the current reappropriation that's in place, she's already making a recommendation for that to come back to us. I just wanted to clean up the, the language that was, that was in the CMR before I sent it to you all.
Okay. Ms. Heinz.
All of, uh, the only thing I wanted to reiterate, as we, one, two, three, four, five, the seven bullets that are on here, the only one that would impact the way that we do business, and it, we, you just put this into your practice, is the third bullet that says the city manager and superintendent agree to discuss the plans for unspent funds. That is just capital management, that is just spending, you know, you share what it is that you're going to do. Bullet one, bullet two, we already do, they already fund our CIP, we already have a transparent process, we already go through and do our budgeting process dates, everything that's done. We've talked about risk management, as Mr. Parent said, we've said no, 1/12 the school division, that has nothing to what we do, we have to live with it.
Right.
Um, but let's just not call it quarterly funding. City and schools agree to obtain the best financial sources to fund projects, don't we do that? We have grant writers, we have revenue streams that we try to get, and we'll review this compact annually. Well, you can review this compact daily if you want to, to get it done, you know, but really the only thing in here that is impactful, that may help us in the future, in my opinion, is going to be to, you know, talk about the unspent funds, because that's really always going to be the bone of contention. Everything else on here, we've already done or we've already spoken to.
But Dr. Brice, oh, excuse me.
Did you present this to us, for us to suggest to you whether or not to sign it?
What you thought about it?
Okay, so you're going to, you're going to, you're going to make the decision whether you want to sign it or not, the two of you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Superintendent.
I got it, yeah, I got it yesterday, and I said, you're going to give this to the board tonight. Yes, I am, because I want them to read this. I mean, nothing's going to happen unless this board agrees, and that's why we're having this discussion. That's why when you asked a few minutes ago, you wanted to know how each board member felt. Well, basically, based on the, the straw vote, this is just a piece of paper we're going to tear up. I mean, you've, you've given the superintendent the message that we aren't interested in having the chairman of the school board sign this, or the superintendent.
And as the council has said, it doesn't do any good for you or the mayor to sign because the, the council has voted in the school.
What I'm really interested in is the CMRs, because that, that's.
Right, that tells the story.
That tells the story, because that's what they're going to vote on Tuesday night. Not this.
And you've already seen it.
Yes.
And you've asked for some adjustments.
Yes.
And she agreed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, one last question, councilman, or councilman, council meetings. The, the '01 memorandum of understanding of 75-25 that addresses for the surplus that would come back, under state code, is there anything that would address with regards to something like this? I, I'm understanding that this MOU is just something that was an agreement between the city and school board.
It was a resolution.
Yeah, but is there anything in state code that addresses things like the surplus is getting turned back percentages to it, or?
You turn it off.
No, no, the code says it, but I'm saying, is there anything that the code would address that would say that the city or, you know, legal bodies has guidelines to say, turn back 75%, turn back 50, or?
I called, I called Elizabeth Ewing at the SBA, and I explained to her what was going on. And she said, Mr. Parent, there are, she used, many school divisions that are, that are in the same situation that you're in. There is nothing that requires the governing body to return.
Anything.
Anything to you. Now, I did say, I did bring up, I said, well, you know, we have a, a resolution. She said, well, you're fortunate, because you have a resolution that, and, and that does, that helps you, but many of the localities throughout the state, at the end of the year, all of it goes back. My thing that Dr. Brice and I have been talking about, and my heartburn is, that I don't want to be caught, in other words, we got bills to pay, and I don't want to pay those bills out of '18 appropriation, because if we're forced to do that, that means we as a board, we're going to have to adjust our 2018 budget.
Right.
I don't want to do that, because we have a, we have a, a policy that says 128, 120 days. I want to be able to make sure that what we ordered, that we're going to be able to pay for out of the appropriation of 2017 appropriation, just reappropriate that money, let us pay our bills, and then move forward with 2018.
Correct.
And, and reappropriate that money as not part of this year's appropriation.
Right, exactly.
That really becomes the catch.
That is. Ms. Williams?
And I do think that if it comes down to that where they do not want to reappropriate the money that we've encumbered funds for, then we do have to take legal action to go to court for that.
Right.
Because working for the city for 30 years, we were always able to encumber, and the merchandise sometimes came way after June 30th, but we paid off of that P.O.
Right.
And we've never had this problem, we only had it, you all know when we had it, and we didn't have it for four years, and now you know why we have it again. I don't have to spell it out.
Right.
Or I'll tell you privately.
Right.
But if, if they come back, because the city has always done that, we always paid the bills, because I know I used to pay them, and I would order, so I know what they used to do. So, I mean, you can't just order from people and not expect that we don't pay them their money, and it shouldn't have to come out of 18 budgeted funds. So, if it comes to that, then this board will have to make a decision of whether to go to court to resolve that issue, because we have a different policy from the city. The state code has a thing on encumbrances and unspent funds, and we would have to do like legal councils say, someone would have to resolve it other than the city.
Right. Would we go to, if we, if, if we, if it came to that, would we go, would we, would we hire a mediation judge to rule on? Because as Elizabeth Ewing said, we go, if we do this, if we take it to court, that we're, we're going to be the, I mean, this will be throughout the whole state of Virginia, however, however the ruling comes down, because nobody's done this.
Well, it, it really, it's, it's very difficult to prognosticate or predict litigation circumstance.
Right.
And, and it's dangerous to do so, and I don't want to be viewed as encouraging this board to initiate litigation against the city. I'm not doing that. But what I will say to you is, the issue to me is very, is a fine issue. I may not be what gets litigated, but it's a fine issue. And that is, at the end of the year, if you have contracts, that you are contracted for, you have money that you have contracted to spend, but the contract has not yet matured, so you can't spend the money yet, you cannot outlay that money. But you also have a fund of money that is not spent, it's sitting there.
Right.
Do they get treated the same? The city would say they're exactly the same. I don't care whether you've got contracts for that money, whether you have obligations for that money or not, they're exactly the same, it all comes back to us and we can reappropriate it to you. Well, that assumes that you cannot reappropriate it to us if you decide to do that. And so, the question becomes, did the people who enacted the laws of Virginia mean to characterize unspent funds as funds that are obligated to be spent under lawful contracts, so that the city can, if it chooses to, not refund it and put the school board in financial liability, breaching debts, and potentially creating crimes by spending money you don't have?
Correct.
And if you think they can do that, a court's going to have to say it.
Right. Ms. Heinz and Reverend.
Well, and the whole thing about this encumbrance money, is it money, it's money that, that was a part of our '17 budget.
That's correct.
This is not above and beyond, this is not anything extra.
Right.
And basically, what I'm saying is, we ran a school division on 11 months' worth of allotments, and I'm done.
Reverend Teller.
Just had a question for, for Brittany. Just in case, uh, we don't get the full encumbrance, have we already started making, I guess, a plan B for how we're going to, how this will affect us in our '18?
Um, I do not have a full plan yet, but I'm, not anything that's formalized.
And just to make sure, because if, the initial request for reappropriation was taken away about 2.0?
The initial was taken away 5.8.
5.8 million? So, we would have to find 5.8 million to cover.
Yes, uh, yes. Under that original scenario, a lot of that would be living off of reserves in '18 when it came to our risk management fund, which will then, the issue really become in '19, when you've used up all your reserve.
One of the things that I'll just share with this, with you, the conversation that, when the mayor called, I mean, he cited the CUSAB, and, but he also said that it appears that what we have done is that we have waited until the last, the very, the very end of the school year to purchase, and he, and he referenced the SMART boards. And I said to him that, and I think Dr. Brice and I talked about this, that the night that they were supposed to vote on this, I think, Mr. Snapper, you were going to address city council that evening to explain that you just didn't start in May, that you started back, way back in October, September, doing all the research, so that when it got to the time, you know, you had to go through the research, and then you had to go through the bidding process, then that's the reason why it may look like that we're spending money at the end of the year. But we started a long time before then, is that, is that correct?
That is correct. It started back a year in October.
Okay, all right. So, I just wanted you to know of the conversation, that what he and I shared, I said, and, and then, and Mr. Snapper was going to clarify that, that evening, but they decided, you know, but it's good. Ms. Williams?
And, and also, I will share that someone told me at the Rotary meeting that he spoke at, he spoke about the school board spending money senselessly.
Yeah.
On SMART boards and things like that. That's why I'm saying, we cannot have them micromanaging how. And you have to come up to the 21st century.
Correct.
You can't have chalkboards.
You can't be stuck way back in, in time.
No.
Right.
You can't have chalkboards.
Slates.
Slates.
Pencils.
Pencils. Okay, I think we beat this horse to death.
No, we just got started.
Dr. Brice, I think that, might as well turn that piece of paper over, but you and Dr.?
Yeah, we, we can talk about it.
Y'all can talk about it. All right. Update, discussion on agenda review, the 21st. Dr. Brice?
The agenda that's in the, 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 the agenda that's in the system is for the seven.
Yeah, there's, we didn't, yeah, we didn't get a 21st. It's not on.
We can listen, we're good at listening.
Yeah, but it's not. I mean, it's not in here.
It's not in Board docs, it's the seven.
It's today's agenda.
It's today's one.
Yeah, but it's not.
Why don't you just read it?
You don't have to vote on it.
So, I don't want to, it's just discussion.
This room.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, I'll go over it. We'll start with the early session, with closed session at 5:30. We'll open with the chair, then we have a moment of silence, pledge, statement. Mr. Lamb is the board member of, for the month. He will read the mission statement. Then we will have our attendance vote, approval of the agenda, and Ian will give the student representative report.
Yay!
Next item, curriculum instruction, we'll have the monthly report. Presentations, we have the United Way, the Portsmouth Council of PTAs, and we'll be recognizing Churchill Elementary School for their distinguished achievement award. And next, we'll have the approval of the minutes from April, August 4th through 5th, August 17th, public comment, HR report, along with operations. We'll have our information for our spring, or for our special summer hiring. We'll have an electronic vote on the transaction report for September of 2017. Next, we'll have our budget and planning. We'll have the electronic vote on the budget for June, July, and August, followed by my report. Then we will have the vote in consideration for graduation relocation, and board members' comments and concerns, followed by adjournment.
Yes, my understanding, and I want us to have an understanding that, and Mrs. Heinz brought it up, to be placed on the agenda for the retreat, and I didn't do it, because Dr. Brice and I had felt that her question was for a consent agenda, which means you lump, and Dr. Brice is very familiar with it, because that's what they used to do in North Carolina, that you lump all of the curriculum, the HR, and the financial, you lump them all together, and we would vote on them together. But what, what I feel like we're doing is that I like the fact that you're not reading your report anymore, that you have students and you're highlighting what's going on. Personally, board members, I like that. The other thing is that the HR report, the employee transaction, that is done in here, so if you have any questions, you ask, you asked it in here. Mr. Ziegler doesn't get up and read his report. I mean, we can read the report. The, um, the same thing with his operation and for, now, it's important for Brittany, I mean, we get the report, but it's important for her to review the financial report, and we can ask, you can ask questions, it's just that we don't need to be read to.
Correct.
And I think it will expedite, but, but she needs, in other words, we need to be able to ask her questions about the financial reports, because once we vote on it, the next morning, it goes upstairs. So, I want the board to understand, we're trying to expedite these reports so that they don't have to be read, we don't have to read them, we're, we're capable of reading it. And you're, you do your homework, you can ask the questions that you need to ask.
Yep.
Okay? All right. Board members' reports, do any of you have reports? I know a lot of you have been out in the schools. Do any of you have any reports?
I just want to say that it was, from what I've seen and heard, it's been a wonderful opening day. I didn't have any bus complaints, no crossing guard complaints, no late buses, no super early buses, um, so as far as I, you know, no news is good news, and I'm going to stick with that. Um, I know that my little one was excited to go back, and I hope everybody else was too. I just want to thank the teachers and the school staffs for being on post and being there to welcome everybody back in the first day, because it's not just the teachers that are having a first day, it's everybody that touches a child is having that first day. So, thank you for your positivity and your smiles and making sure that everybody was ushered in and ushered home in a timely fashion.
Right. Reverend Teller, what y'all did at Parkview, I wish I would, could have been there, but I was at two other schools, but that was, that was great coverage, news coverage, it was awesome, so that's great. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else about it, but it was very good.
Well, just thankful the community came together.
Yeah, they came together. Any of you, any other, have any board reports? Now, we go to subcommittee reports, I know it's the beginning of the year, probably haven't had time to, to meet, so if there are no subcommittee reports, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn, second.
Motion's been made, and second, then we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who will stay, you can stay all night.